I'd like to call this meeting of the Bedford County Board of Supervisors to order. Welcome everyone here. If you have a cellphone, if you wouldn't mind to put that on silence or vibrate, that would be wonderful. And we will begin our meeting tonight with a moment of silence. Thank you if you'd stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first thing up we have is the approval of our agenda. Any questions regarding the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
There are none, I'll like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion from Mr. Sharp, is there a second? Second from Ms. Parker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. That brings us to our citizen comment period. I don't have anyone that has signed up this evening, but if there is someone present that would like to, you'll have three minutes to speak on how wonderful the fair and the tractor pull and the disco. Nobody wants to share, so we will move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Hiss.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we only had one item on the consent agenda this evening, and that's a resolution authorizing the application, submission and acceptance and appropriation of a VFIRS hardware grant through the Virginia Fire Services Board and Virginia Department of Fire Programs. So, this is a grant basically for computers and tablets for our volunteer fire departments.
Okay, any questions regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none, we entertain a motion for action.
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Davis, second by Mr. Johnson.
It was me.
What was it?
I heard it in my left ear.
So, the motion was from Mr. Sharp, second by-
No, no, no. Motion was Mr. Davis.
Second by Mr. Sharp. Long as y'all know, I'm good. All right, Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Bensley. Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Parker.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. That brings us to the approval of the minutes from the August 12th, 2024 meeting. Any corrections or additions to those minutes?
There are none. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August 12th, 2024.
A motion from Mr. Sharp, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Johnson. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. That moves us on to our public hearings and presentations. First up is a proclamation and recognition of September 2024 as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, and Ms. Bensley will be sharing.
I am wearing teal tonight in honor of my lifelong friend Michelle Present, who lost her fight with ovarian cancer nearly four years ago, and the nearly 20,000 women who will be diagnosed with ovarian cancer this year. It's with those women in mind that I would like to read the proclamation and recognition of September 2024 as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, whereas ovarian cancer is the fifth leading cause of cancer deaths among women in the United States, whereas all women are at risk for ovarian cancer, and 90% of women diagnosed with ovarian cancer do not have a family history that puts them at higher risk, and whereas there is currently no reliable and easy to administer screening test used for early detection ovarian cancer, and whereas due to the lack of reliable early screening tests, 75% of the cases of ovarian cancer are detected at an advanced stage, significantly decreasing the five-year survival rate, and whereas if ovarian cancer is diagnosed and treated at an early stage before the cancer spreads outside the ovary, the survival rate is as high as 90%. And whereas ongoing investment in ovarian cancer research, education and awareness efforts are critical to improving the survivorship for women with ovarian cancer, and whereas each year during the month of September, the Ovarian Cancer Research Alliance and community partner organizations hold a number of events to increase public awareness of ovarian cancer and its symptoms, now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of Bedford County, Virginia hereby recognize the month of September 2024 as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will keep that for Ms. Huddleston when we're able to deliver that to her. Next up is consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter Four, Animals, Article Five, Dog License Ordinance 0082624-01. Mr. Skelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and we do have Mr. Perro here to answer some of the gory details of the board desires, but the board may recall a number of years ago, Treasurer Snow started moving toward streamlining the dog license process to provide for lifetime dog licenses only. We still had some holdovers after the last round of changes and working with Mr. Perro. We would now like to move toward a completely lifetime dog license for residents of the county.
Okay.
And the ordinance before you provides for that.
Any questions for Mr. Skelly about that?
I do have one question, I thought we already did.
We discussed it and we did change the ordinance, but we still had the one-year license on the books, and that's what's being dispensed with this evening.
There used to be like a one-year, then after you were renewing it, then it was a lifetime. Now you're getting rid of the one-year, it's just a lifetime.
Just a lifetime, exactly.
Does that apply to all dogs in the county?
Yes, sir.
If they don't have-
Well, except for God dogs, but-
If they have an owner, how do they know to come get their license?
Put up a notice at the park.
And I'm not sure-
Do they have to pass a test?
The driving is the tough part.
Okay, well, this is a public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up to speak for or against it, but I open the public comment time for anybody that would like to speak for or against the proposal. Everyone loves their dogs here, so nobody's gonna speak. So, I'll close the citizen comment time and bring it back to the board for possible action.
Mr. Chair, since no one seems to be opposed to this, I'm gonna make a motion to approve ordinance 0082624-01.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Sharp, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Bensley, this is a roll call, Mr. Johnson.
Well, now that it's clear who let the dogs out, I'll vote yes.
Ms. Bensley.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Parker.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. That moves us on to consideration of a resolution setting the personal property tax relief rate available through the Personal Property Tax Relief Act, Resolution R082624-02. Ms. Anderson.
Hey, good evening, everybody. So, of course, each year we have to set the percentage personal property tax relief. As we discussed during a work session a couple of weeks ago, an analysis of the preliminary fiscal year '24 personal property tax values did show that individual vehicle values have decreased by approximately 30% since 2022. So, the staff recommendation is to assess values at the market rate for 2024. In other words, offering no depreciation on that rate. With the personal property tax values at market rate, the recommended personal property tax relief rate is 32%. That percentage is a slight reduction from 2023, but it does closely approximate the amount of funding that we receive from the state. Just for reference, the county receives about 6.1 million from the state, and a 32% relief rate would offer about 6.2 million in relief to taxpayers. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Anderson?
So, what did you come up with for 30%? Again, I remember you saying it last time, I couldn't remember where you got it.
Yes, sir, so that was when we took the fiscal year '24 preliminary book. We discounted it back to '22 values by adding back all sales and backing off all purchases that have occurred since '22. So, we were looking at the same vehicles essentially. And when we did that and we compared values in '24 to values in '22, the values were 30% less than they were in '22. So, we were really looking at those vehicles that existed in '22 and what do they look like today? And they were 30% less than they were.
I still don't know where that's coming from. Because I know people that's out there buying cars and stuff, doesn't seem like they've come down that much.
Purchasing newer cars may still, the prices may still be up, but again, what we were trying to target was the group of people that, you know, you owned a vehicle in '22, let's say you owned it '21, '20, '21, '19, so forth, and then in '22, your value suddenly increased by 30% from where they had been, you know, one, two, three years prior to that. Anything that people have purchased since '22, yes, they may be buying them at higher rates, but they bought the vehicle knowing that, they bought the vehicle expecting that that was the value. The group that we were trying to target with our relief was the group that it was that unexpected hit due to inflationary issues. And those values have come down.
You.
Any other questions? All right. Any discussion from the board? Ms.
I think that one of the things I've always looked at is, a couple of years ago, we had the opportunity to raise taxes on cigarettes, and my comment was, well, let's not do it. People will come to Bedford County and when they purchase cigarettes, they'll buy other stuff here, and that's a small example, but I do believe when we come next spring into our budget session, I'd like to revisit, you know, what we're charging the taxes on automobiles, because, you know, it's not a joke. I mean, there's, there's a lot of stuff out there, and when everybody's seen the comments where people say you're taxed on what you earn, you're taxed on what you buy, and so on and so forth goes. And, and I really do think that, that one way to stimulate the economy is, is reducing taxes. And I, I, so I would just like to say, I would like to have probably seen this rate go lower. I was for option three when we had our discussion in the work session last go around. I think you were too, Mr. Scott, but I'll go along with it this time. But I would seriously like to entertain, see if we can't lower the rate on personal property tax rate next go around.
Any other discussion? Can entertain a motion of action one way or the other?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R082624-02.
I have a motion from Mr. Sharp, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Parker, this is roll call. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Bensley.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
And Ms. Parker.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. That brings us to consideration of a resolution authorizing the advertisement of an invitation to bid and the execution of a contract with the lowest possible- responsible, responsible and responsive bidder for the construction of the new scale house at the solid waste facility. That's Resolution R082624-03. Mr. Coffey.
Good evening. This resolution is essentially asking for authorization to advertise for bids or replacement for our sadly abused scale house out at the solid waste facility. And I opted to include authorization for the county administrator to execute a contract as well to kind of streamline the process. Usually, it's another request and another resolution, but in the interest of time and thriftiness, I thought to include both of those in the same resolution to streamline the process as much as possible.
All right. Any questions for Doug on the sad little scale house?
We haven't figured out who's paying for this. Or should I not ask that question? Want me to withdraw my question?
I don't, I, I don't think we have all the answers to that quite yet. We'll have to wait for the insurers to duke it out and then see, see where that falls. So, more to come on that.
Don't be in politics, Robert.
All right, any other discussion from the board?
Mr. Chair, I just have a comment. I'd like to see us do the combination, what we're doing here to, in, for time, for some other, other items like we were discussing earlier in the work session as far as putting things out, and you said how you have to come back to get another. I mean, we not take that as something that maybe we need to-
Streamline.
Streamline, there you go, that's the word, streamlining.
Probably just depends on the threshold.
Whenever we can, let's put it that way.
Yeah, I, I mean, I know, Mr. Coffey and I discussed that, and we thought that this was a fairly emergency situation, so we felt very comfortable doing that in this situation, but-
I feel like there's some other things that are emergency situations too.
And there could be.
I think what she's saying is, what normally takes us a year to do, we'd like to do in three months.
Without a study, without paying for a high-dollar study.
I think she's saying she needs a bathroom.
Pickleball courts.
All right, any other discussion? Looking for a motion for possible action.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R082624-03.
All right, I have a motion from Ms. Parker, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Davis, this roll call, Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Bensley.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr., Mr., Mr. Scott. Ms. Parker.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. That moves us on down to board committee reports. I don't have any for this evening. And then to board comments. Anything anybody like to share?
Well, I'd just like to say it's a historical day in Major League Baseball, and this is not devoted to Bedford County, but it's just pretty good to know. History will be made today, it'll be the first time ever in Major League Baseball that one player has played for two teams on the same day. It's happening right now as we speak. The, the teams are playing each other, and there's one player who's played for both teams in one game. Same game.
How do you do that?
The game start, the game started in July, and it was suspended because of rain, and it's playing, being resumed tonight, and during that time, the catcher was traded to the, to Boston, and he now, now he started the game plan for them, and now he's finishing the game plan for the other team. Just, just a little trivia for you. You were part of it.
That'll definitely be a trivia, Trivial Pursuit questions.
And then on behalf of the board, we want to extend our condolences to D W's family at the loss of his father-in-law. Anybody else?
And I would just add, I know insurance hasn't been settled yet, but for the taxpayers of Bedford County have to pay for it, there's a, another locality that should probably be responsible for any other deductibles or other charges that, if, if need be, I'd be more than happy to take legal action.
It seemed like this weekend was, was a big weekend between the tractor pull, Sims Farm, and I was coming by there Saturday, Saturday evening as people were piling in there, it looked like they had a huge success. And I went down to the county fair, and my goodness, I could, was overwhelmed at the crowd of folks down there, and, and it seemed like things worked very well this, this weekend in Bedford.
And the disco, World Championship.
The disco, oh my gosh, I almost forgot that, yeah.
Super kudos to our sheriff.
We'll also publicly thank the sheriffs and the chief for a trouble-free weekend.
You guys made lots of overtime.
How about the citizens of the county as well? They behaved themselves.
Anybody else? That moves us to the county administrator report.
I had two, two items. One was really just to echo what the last couple of comments from Mr. Davis and the other board members were, just again thanking the, thanking the public safety staff, you know, from EMS, Sheriff's Office, 911, and then our volunteer agencies also who assisted at these sites, but also the other county employees who are actively involved in a lot of these events. I know if I start naming them, I'll forget them, but I know Cooperative Extension was intricately involved with the county fair. Tourism and economic development and Parks and Recreation were very involved with the disc golf tournament, especially Parks and Rec. I mean, they were literally on the ground, working the New London course, you know, every single day that that occurred. And anyways, just a lot, a lot of dedication by our employees, and always very appreciative of that. And as the board said, that this weekend seemed to go very well without any major issues. So, that was great. The other item is just, just a real quick, couple-minute preview. You know, we're not having, the board is not having a work session the next meeting on September 9th, but on September 23rd, we will have a work session about the EMS and fire funding strategies that the board asked us to study and review. So, finance staff and firing EMS have been working very hard, coming up with the different options and calculating those, and they'll be prepared to present those to you during the work session in September. I know there's been one fire commission meeting in July where most of these concepts were reviewed, and they were, they were received with minimal, you know, questions or feedback, but, you know, that, that may still come. But, but overall, a couple of the areas is looking at a stipend of some level for the volunteers who respond to a certain number of calls, looking, looking at doing something along those lines, aligning the, instead of just having a flat amount of funds that every department receives, trying to align that a little bit with the department, the amount of call volume that they receive, and they still receive a minimal amount, but, you know, some, aligning that a little bit more with the volume of work that some respond to, so we'll be talking about that. See, of course, we talked about before about participation and the read-upon procedures are basically the audit process, as that's going to be, you know, mandatory in terms of receiving some of these funding, moving away from somewhat sort of the annual reimbursement model to a more predictive and sustainable funding approach, especially when you get into preventative maintenance on vehicles and personal protection equipment and those types of things. One of the things we, that's fire staff realize from visiting the different stations and at the fire commission is that they, as much as, there's a lot of talent on a lot of our fire departments and EMS rescue squads, but at the same time, you know, they're, they're doing all other, other things, you know, they're volunteering. So, what they heard is about offering workshops to enhance education about budgeting and financial wellness and planning for the future. So, that was something that we heard that we were trying to offer. But also, we'll look at increased county funding for fire engines, ladder trucks and RIT rescue apparatus. So, we'll talk about what that will look like, so there'll be an increase in that level of funding, extending the, let's see here, extending the replacement schedule or accelerating the replacement schedule for certain apparatus. You know, we, what's been going on for years and years and years is that, well, when you hit 20 years, you just get a new engine or a new piece of equipment. Well, we may have some vehicles that are, you know, running a whole bunch of calls that may need to be accelerated quicker, but you also have, on the flip side of that, you have some vehicles and apparatus who don't run as many calls or mileage, so they may not, didn't need to be replaced at 20 years, they may be 23 or 24, 25 years. So, we'll talk about that a little bit more as well. And also, that'll go with EMS. We've also heard from the rescue squads, and I think some of you have too, is that we'll present some options about county funding, at least a portion of the ambulances for rescue squads. So, we have not been doing that in the past, but again, those are becoming more and more expensive, and they, they've requested some assistance with that. So, anyways, I think one thing that we got caught in this year, so the final point I'll make is, we were updating our funding mix every about two or three years. You know, we'd go out and get quotes on fire apparatus and ambulances, and depending on that, we would then back into what we would recommend funding. Well, that needs to be updated every year, so, because the fire apparatus industry is so volatile that we've realized that you gotta look at those prices every 12 months versus every 24 or 36 months to make sure our budget is reflective of what the actual costs are. So, anyways, we'll go into a lot of details about all that with some numbers behind it, but it should be a fairly informative work session on the 23rd, which, and I think it'll be consistent with what I, hoping what the board want to accomplish when we talk about this in June when we were drafting the budget. about this in June when we were drafting the budget.
Okay. Anything from Mr. Stouter?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Mr. Lawhorn? Mr. Skelly?
Oh, we're rolling on.
Board information, you've got some social service board minutes in there. He's already gone over our upcoming meetings. Mr. Scott, is there anything you want to share?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, we were adjourned.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Parker, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.